For the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Marked the meeting open at 7:05 PM. And we'll start off with item number three, public comment. Is there any public comment? Whoever gets here first, speaking to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Al Yagavane, 25 Lane Drive, Seymour, Connecticut. I'm here tonight to discuss the following statement, you can't fight City Hall. I was informed last night that the Broad Street Park again is under attack in that they're going to destroy the flower bed in the circle of the sidewalk and plant a tree. Plant a tree, a Christmas tree. The park was designed to honor the veterans. I spent the last 34 years doing just that. And I file that fighting City Hall, they do things, they don't discuss things with the chairman of the Broad Street Park Committee, which I thought everything was transparent in town, but it's not. Things are done, people aren't invited or asked their opinion. I'm against a tree being planted there. It's gonna ruin the flowers, it's gonna kill the flowers. The roots, nobody can guarantee that a dwarf tree will not spread out and the roots of the tree lift the brick. With that being said, alright, I find this last night by a member of our committee, alright. I was told that a committee was set up, a Christmas tree committee. Very upsetting. I've heard this a year ago, and it was brought before the Broad Street, Friends of the Broad Street Park Committee, several times, and each time it got knocked down. Knowing that I can't fight City Hall, I'm saying I'm against it with whole heart and soul. Thirty-four years I've tried to honor the veterans in what I call a fitting manner. I am told that the park is one of the most beautiful parks in the Noggetuck Valley area. I've had people from West Haven, Hampden, Hartford, and from California come out and purchase a brick because they saw what the park looked like. With that being said, if a tree is planted in the circle, I'm offering my resignation effective December 7th. I don't want to, I thought I'd take care of the park until I dropped. But with things the way they are, the Parks Committee decisions are made, lighting was changed supposedly to save money for the town when in fact I had LED lights in the park prior to this new lighting program. And they put a large bulb in, it looks like a parking lot, and you're using more electricity to supply those lights. We spent almost 200 bucks per light, and we raised the money ourselves. The town didn't pay for those lights, and I was told it was thrown into garbage. I wasn't asked my opinion, I wasn't told about it, and when I asked the assistant town, Rory, I forgot his last name, about what kind of studies did you use? And the answer I got was negative. There was no studies. It was what he thought was the best. Well, thinking and doing is two different things. When I spent a year studying lighting, alright, I already had LED bulbs in those lights. We changed them twice a year. We washed the lights out, cleaned them up, took all the bugs and whatnot out of the lights. Every year, right up until this past year, because now I'm told we have no say down here. So with that being, December 7th will be my last day on the Friends of the Broad Street Park. I will take and work with the town to give them whatever paperwork they need and whatnot. Again, thank you. You're a new guy, keep an open eye, an open heart, and be honest with people, be transparent. That's the biggest thing going. If you don't like somebody, and if I don't like somebody, I'm gonna tell them to their face, alright? If I don't like what's going on, that's why I'm here tonight. I don't like what this town has done as far as helping the veterans of foreign wars, and that's it. We've had to fight for everything we got down at the park. I didn't ask, I never came to this town and asked for a red cent. The only help we ever got was when we needed a forklift, they came over. I didn't want to put a 30-foot tree down the park. I started out putting a 10- to 12-foot tree, and it took three guys to put them up. Three guys, and they're here, John Beon and that guy over there, Jim Williams. We put the trees up ourselves. We carted them on a 12-foot trailer. Now, they got a big tree, I got accused of the something about a tree where the top broke off. Had nothing to do with me. I had nothing to do with that tree. And I'm pretty upset with this town as far as the way it's being ran. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Is there any other public comment?
Thank you. For the record, my name is Michael H. Horrible, 12 Oakwood Drive, Seymour, Connecticut. I came here tonight to praise the Board of Selectmen for the recent construction that I've seen along Bank Street and Columbus Street. I have done many projects of construction throughout Connecticut. And I've always appreciated the construction and cost that goes along with it of granite curbs. And I view, and I have gone through the town, those two streets many times, to look at the construction of the new curbs and the repair of the sidewalks. In the past, in my occupation, I did a number of insurance claims, fall downs, okay? And I believe that the town of Seymour, with this new construction, has eliminated the potential for a lot of fall downs and has made the town of Seymour, those two streets with the granite curbs, more desirable for the antique dealers and more, what do I say? Where people like to come and just see it. You walk along a sidewalk and you don't say, oh, this sidewalk is beautiful. But in the back of their minds, they realize the granite sidewalks kinda like take us back in history, okay? And that has built upon the Seymour history, and I appreciate that. And I wanted to commend the Board of Selectmen for taking that action and expense for having that done. On another subject, I wasn't aware that Mr. Yagavane was going to be here tonight, but I am also a member of the Friends of the Broad Street Park Committee, okay? And I was recently appointed by the Parks Committee along with two other fellows to oversee and select a site for a Christmas tree in the park, okay? I have, I have brought this up four months ago to the Friends of the Broad Street Park, which was the last time we had a quorum to meet, okay? And I brought up and I made the motion to, the motion was to ask the Parks Commission for their okay to investigate what kinds of dwarf trees there were available and what we, to, so I would know what kind of trees we could put into the center of the circle without disrupting the brick sidewalks or hiding the flowers, okay? Now, since that time, my, of my investigation, I found that they make dwarf Christmas trees two feet high, up to 20 or 12 and 20-foot heights, okay? But I, with this recent appointment by the Parks Commission, we have not had a meeting yet. We were only appointed like a week and a half ago, I believe. And so I would want to meet with the other two members and see what they know, because I'm not a tree expert, and I would want to find out what kind of Christmas tree would be appropriate there. I do not want to block all the views, I do not want the tree to overshadow everything else that was done there, okay? And while a Christmas tree has been in the Broad Street Park for many years, I like that idea, okay? And it also, to me, would save the town money over the current method of getting a tree from, I think it was Lake Gullard or North Branford, and bringing it here, and it was a large tree and erecting that. I don't know what that cost. But if we planted a live dwarf tree that could grow to, and I'm gonna say maybe 10 to 20-foot in height at the maximum, I don't think that would take away from the beauty of the other plants at the park, and I think it would add to the beauty of Seymour. Having said all that, I'm done. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? Hearing no other public comment, we'll move on to item number four, approved minutes from the September 18, 2018 regular meeting, have a motion to do so. Motion by Al, second by Stefan. Starting discussion. Hearing none, all in favor. Opposed. Stained. Cheer votes, I, motion passes 5-0-1. Mr. Bruno's abstention. Al. Item number five, approved minutes from September 18, 2018, special meeting, have a motion to do so. Motion by Bob, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Opposed. Stained. Cheer votes, I, motion passes 4-0-2. And Stefan and Al.
Item number six, First Selectmen's report. We finalized the finance package for both the fire truck and the energy efficiency projects. Both came in with rates lower than expected due to our strong financial position. The energy efficiency project is expected to have a kickoff meeting at some point next week to finalize all the plans and set up the appropriate timelines with staff. The Board of Ed is recommending a few small changes to the plans based on the potential future needs of the school. They want to change out one of the oil burners for a gas burner because of the potential of running gas up Monkey Road. We're looking forward to getting this project up and running in the coming weeks. Attended a GFOA conference in Mystic for two days with Doug. Doug attended many of the sessions that allowed him to get his continuing education credits. I was able to network with other mayors and First Selectmen and their finance teams to discuss best practices and share the things that have worked for us over the past few years. Governmental Finance Officers of America. I had a debrief with the folks from IT in a Box, I talked about that at the last meeting, along with Rob Dyer. We gave them a good amount of feedback on their initial presentation to allow them to present to other towns and cities. We discussed Seymour's IT needs going forward. I was pleased to hear their opinion regarding the steps we have taken over the last few years and how far along we have come over that time. They actually said that we are much farther off than most municipalities, so all that credit goes to Rob Dyer for all of his hard work and efforts. On behalf of CCM, I'm continuing to work with Waterbury and Mayor New O'Leary and the members of the professional firefighters and police unions to create legislation to address PTSD issues that may arise for our first responders. Our goal, as I had mentioned in the past, is to have this done by the end of October to present jointly to the new legislature that will take office in January of 2019. The process has picked up in recent weeks, and we are working towards creating this legislation that will benefit both towns and cities while protecting all of our first responders. And then finally, I attended the VEMS, which is the Valley Emergency Medical Service Board of Directors Meeting. The organization continues to grow and move forward. Their finances are improving each quarter, and they're looking at other opportunities to provide services to valley communities as well as broadening out to other surrounding communities. I'm honored to have been nominated to remain as vice president for another two-year term.
So that closes the First Selectmen's report. We'll move on to item number seven, which is discussion, take possible action regarding CARES request. In your packets, you have an email from CARES sent to myself and to Rory about a program that they would like to start in Seymour, using the former animal shelter that they now use as their home base. I think it's certainly a worthwhile endeavor that they're looking to do, so I asked the CARES folks to come and explain, so I'm not sure who's going to. So if you want to come up and just talk into the microphone and just state your name for the record, so that way it gets picked up. If you need to lower the mic, raise it just feel free.
I'm Debbie Kiefer, I'm the Executive Director of CARES, and we would like to bring this program to Seymour. TEAM is the only mobile feline spay-neuter clinic in the state. They go to communities all over Connecticut, and they offer low-cost spay-neuter services, basic vaccination services, and they do it at a reduced cost. They have not been to the Seymour area, the closest communities have been Waterbury or New Haven, and those book up very quickly. So we would like to bring them to Seymour, use the parking lot at Matthews Field, so that they can run their program. We're a very small rescue, we get calls very frequently from residents who are caretakers of stray cat, stray cat colonies, not necessarily feral, and they're always looking for assistance. We can only do so much, and we feel that by bringing this program to the town, a low-cost spay-neuter, we could help more residents. We do have to open it up to all towns, we can't limit it to Seymour. But we would, what we would like to do is apply for a grant that will help us reduce the cost further for Seymour residents. We have a lot of contacts, the cat caretakers, the residents who call us, so we would do an outreach to them to let them know of the clinic and offer them vouchers for a further reduction on the cost of their spay-neuter for those cats. Are any questions on that program?
Can I go ahead?
We just adopted two cats. And it cost us $350.
Right.
So this would be a deal.
For the two cats.
Yeah, this would be a deal, 50 bucks each.
Brother and sister. And we were told that we couldn't adopt one without the other. So I was wondering if you could tell us, is that your policy?
Not our policy, there are what they call bonded pairs for cats. You're talking about having to adopt two at a time?
We have, we have a brother and a sister.
Right, so they must have been a bonded pair.
They're a bonded pair.
Right, so they didn't want to break them up. It's not always the case.
But we couldn't adopt one without the other.
Right.
So I was just wondering if that's your policy?
No, we adopt singles too.
Even if they're brother and sister?
Yes, yes, we do. We have three kittens at the shelter, and they're all going to individual homes, separate homes.
Thank you.
But sometimes there are bonded pairs that you just hate to break up, so they will do that. Usually the exception.
Well, these two cats are so close.
Right, that's why they didn't want to split them up.
They didn't want to split them up.
Right.
And, you know, and I'm happy, I'm totally happy with the adoption. But, you know, it's, it's something that, you know. They're close. They're very close.
They're brother and sister.
They're brother and sister.
But it can be an expensive thing to spay and neuter.
Yes, exactly.
You know, rescues like ourselves and municipal shelters, we do our best to have it done before they ever get adopted. If we can't wait because there's an eight, you know, if someone wants a kitten before it's old enough to be spayed or neutered, we give them a voucher to help to fray that clock.
No, these are seven-month-old.
Yeah, so they were old enough to be done. But what we're trying to do is just get a handle on the overpopulation of cats in Seymour and the surrounding towns. There are tons. It's a very sad situation. Kitten season is especially bad time. You've got litter after litter of kittens being born outside. Not all of them make it, so it's a very sad situation, and I think it's a very urgent situation. It's actually, in terms of health and everything, something that we need to address. And we're hoping that this wouldn't be a one-and-done deal, that we could bring TEAM back. If it's a successful program, they can come back again. We would like to launch it in the spring, and then hopefully, if it goes well, maybe we can bring them back in the fall.
Well, let me just say that we are very happy that we've done this.
You make a mention in your, I'm sorry.
Your guy's gonna run you right over.
So you make a mention in the comment that you have to go apply for a grant to reduce the price?
Right.
So you haven't done that at this point.
We have not, we're gonna start that process. I would like to see this program go forward even if we aren't able to secure the grant. The reduced cost is 100, the cost is $110, that's TEAM's normal fee. And that includes the surgery, vaccinations. It's a pretty good deal.
Is that a comment, like with the local vets here, what would they charge for something same?
If you, a lot. Neuter surgery is cheaper than spay, but a spay could run $300, $400 for a cat at a vet. So it is greatly reduced already by TEAM, but we would do it even further to bring that price maybe in half.
Well, that was my other question. You know, it cost us $350, and they were both spayed and neutered and had their shots and stuff. Is that right?
Right, it's usually a package. For both of them, that's actually not bad, but that's why it's usually a package deal with shots and the surgery as well. So you'll get a cat, you know, it's up to date on shots now, it had its rabies vaccine, it's dyspeia, and it's been spayed or neutered. So it's a pretty good deal. If we can, at 110, it's a good deal, which is why I want to go forward even if we can't get the grant. But if we can cut it in half for, you know, residents, even better. And then we would reserve a specific number of appointments that day. They usually do between 30 and 35 cats in a day. So maybe we take 10 or 15 appointments, reserve them for our residents that we know have, need that service, and then anyone else can call and get the other 20.
How many days do you?
Okay.
Just one. They come once, yeah. And then, like I said, if it goes well, I'd like to bring them back in the fall. They don't require anything from us other than the parking lot and access to our bathroom at the shelter there, which we can provide. They are completely self-contained, they don't even need a garbage can from us. Everything is contained in that unit, and they've done this, they've been doing this for over 20 years, so they have it down to a science. They come in around 8 o'clock, set up, residents or whoever has an appointment drops off their cat between 9:00 and 9:30, pickups between 3:30 and 4:00, and then they're out of the parking lot by 5:00. And it's during the week, so I know we have to be conscious of like a schedule, scheduling anything so there's nothing conflicting, but I don't think during the week at that time there's really anything going on at Matthews Field usually.
That's about you, good? Al?
At Matthews Field?
No. It's okay.
I just want to thank Ms. Kiefer, right?
Yeah.
Thank you for coming tonight. I just had a couple of questions as somebody who, in a similar situation, we adopted a couple of cats, a brother and a sister, much like Karen and friend did. And they were stray cats, a litter of kittens were born, it was five years ago, so.
Our cats were from, from New York.
Okay.
They were abused.
Mine was from Hartford, mine was from Hartford area. So I just had a couple of quick questions. Mean Streets of Hartford. Karens are from the Bronx, so my cat's better watch out.
I'm just saying.
I mean, I don't know. I don't know if it's West Hartford or East Hartford, I don't know what my cat's talking about. So I was curious what the root cause is, you were getting into it, the root cause of this issue? People are just abandoning their cats when they move out of town, or they're just?
Exactly. If you look at any of the housing places here in Seymour, there's a lot of turnover there with tenants. They have cats, they leave them, they move, and they're just in the parking lot. They just boot them out, and that's it.
Wow.
So there's abandonment in that sense. There's, cats multiply at an incredible rate. The amount of litters they can, one cat can produce, it's phenomenal. So you're never, it's like impossible to get caught up. We can't do it through adoption.
Right.
You know, we can do all we can to take in these orphan kittens or whatever, but it's not getting at the root of the problem.
Right.
And then you have people who are very concerned citizens, they have, their heart is in the right place, and they are feeding these cats. They're giving them shelter, but they're not spaying and neutering them. So they're keeping them healthy and fed and able to reproduce again.
Well, it's expensive, Karen.
It's just, and we try to drive that home, that if you're gonna be a caretaker for stray cats, you need to spay and neuter. And then there's a whole separate issue of ferals, like.
Yeah.
That's a whole separate issue. That's a little different, but you know, a cat that's had a home, that's been abandoned, if it's outside long enough, becomes feral again. So it's a matter of how much human contact they've had.
Just to add, there was an article in the New Haven Register back in 2010 about Seymour itself, that the administration at the time actually had a program of trying to capture the stray cats, get them spayed and neutered, so that they had to get traps.
Catch and release kind of thing?
They do that for the ferals, ferals have.
People, yeah, people, yeah.
So, but thanks, I'm all for it.
Yeah, thank you, I have to get in on this as well. So my cat's brother and sis, two brothers from Waterbury, so I think. They give your cats a run for their money. Though, my mom's cat is a stray from Seymour, and he's tougher than either of mine, so who knows? With that said, if I could, I would adopt every cat that you have. I try to keep up on it, and perhaps if my, if my wedding does not go through, perhaps I will be adopting some more of your cats.
Stop it!
What, she's, she's?
She's!
My future wife is not helping with the cat population problem.
I mean, really!
Okay? But in all. But in all seriousness. Please mock up, feel free, please feel free to put it on, I can give you spelling after if you'd like. To.
What do you mean if your wedding doesn't go through?
If, for whatever reason, it doesn't go through, I'll get more cats, no big deal. Alright, so, to Bob's point, if this is successful, what do you think the town can do to provide more of these kind of services for you guys going forward? What would you like to see? Because it, to me, it seems like this is kind of a starting point for you, right? This is something you'd like to see starting. What is gonna be your next, kind of your next ask, what's your next?
Just, Deb, just talk into the microphone, just so people can hear.
I would like to see some effort behind the feral cat population, quite frankly.
And that means?
Karen, hold on, let her finish.
It's a big problem, these cats, there's a lot of suffering out there with these cats and the litters of kittens that they bring into the world, and really, no one is doing a lot for ferals. You know, everybody looks at the friendly cats, and we can help them, but the ferals are kind of a lost cause out there. There's really no voice for them at this point in time. There's not a lot of organizations that deal specifically with feral cats. And that's kind of an easy, I shouldn't say easy fix, but it requires the trapping, the spaying, the neutering, the returning. We have a lot of people in Seymour who are willing to care for these cats, but they can't afford or don't have the time or the knowledge to trap them, get them spayed and neutered, and then continue to care for them.
Yeah, so in my dad's neighborhood alone, there's like at least five or six neighborhood cats, and they're super friendly, and everybody feeds them. But at some point, you know, it's crazy if it keeps, you know, if they keep multiplying.
Oh my God, you'll have like 20 cats in no time.
It gets really expensive.
Yeah, so.
It does, yeah.
So I mean, I would, I would just, being personally, would like to see, hopefully this will work out well. Actually, my cats utilize this program.
Oh, TEAM, they work, yeah.
Yeah, they did, down in Stratford, I believe.
Yeah.
But I would love to see this, this grow, this grow if it works, and even the town get involved at some point to perhaps subsidize costs if necessary.
That would be great, I'd love that, yeah.
And even communicate, even to help communicate it.
Deb, I mean, there's, I think there's a lot that the town could do, and I think find somewhere to draw a line, definitely, but. Yeah, I think as much as the town can do, I would be in favor of it personally, so.
I just want to say, we did take one feral cat off of the streets in Seymour. And it was a painful few months. But she's finally coming around almost a year later.
Yeah, if you can get them young, you can flip them, but there's a lot of adult ferals out there that all you can do for them is spay, neuter, get them their shots, and return them, and hopefully have a caretaker who's in. hopefully have a caretaker who's in charge of that colony. They actually do beneficial things. When a colony is controlled through spay and neuter, the numbers only go down, because they're gonna, the elements, they've got the elements, they've got cars, they've got predators, they've got, something's going to get these cats. They live outside. They don't have a long life, but if you can get a colony that is spayed and neutered, they are beneficial.
What did happen to the program that we had in two thousand and ten? Was that a grant for a short period of time, or?
There's a grant. We had the equipment, and that's all been transferred to the regional animal control facility, so they have it there.
And we borrowed some equipment from surrounding towns as well.
Yeah.
That's not a bad idea.
Karen, anything else?
Can I just ask, are there any local vets who are willing to spay or neuter the cats?
Well, all vets perform that service, and, you know, we have some that we work with that.
No, but I'm saying, at a reasonable expense?
For the public in general?
Yes.
No. They work with rescues, and they will discount their services for rescues. We've been very fortunate that they've done that for us.
They just work with rescue?
No, no, they work for the general, anyone can go to any vet they want. But as a person off the street, you get charged whatever prevailing rate they have. There are vets out there who are generous enough to discount their services for people, nonprofits, and rescues like ourselves. So the pets that come to us, we get.
That was my question.
Yeah. And we try to keep our fees very low, too, adoption fees, so we have some of the lowest adoption fees out there. And we're able to do that, because the vets we work with do discount their services for us.
All right, so if no one has any additional questions or comments, I think you can see of the support of the board. So when you do decide to run the program, and you set a date, if you can come back to the board again.
Okay.
Or even just send us a letter or an email, like you did before.
Okay.
And then we'll officially give you permission at that point to use the parking lot and the facilities and everything. That way, there's no issues at all.
I do have, there's a representative from Team who's gonna be coming on October twelfth at noon to just view the space. So once she does that, and we know that they have everything they need there, which is basically just open space, they bring their own electricity, everything, then I'll follow up with you, so that you know I'll pick a date.
Yeah, and we'll put it on the board agenda.
Okay.
I don't think you'd need to come back unless anybody wants to see, see them come back. No? Okay.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you very much, though. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, item number eight, discussion take possible action regarding hiring of town hall floater. Rory, do they have resume? Okay. All right, so as you know, we had an open position for the town hall floater. Rory and Tony, along with the three department heads, that being the town clerk, the tax assessor, and the tax collector, interviewed several candidates. What do we start off with, about twenty? I mean, real ones. We whittled that down to a group of seven or eight that were interviewed. Then it came down to essentially four finalists. The four finalists were given additional interviews. We wanted the three department heads to weigh in, to give us their opinion, since they'll be working in those three departments for the vast majority of the time. So we've narrowed it down to one person. You can see her name is Christine, am I, Seda? Am I saying that right? Sedita? You can see her resume and her experience. I spoke with her for the first time today. And seems like a very nice girl. She's got some good experience. I think she's gonna be a nice fit in town hall. So, wanted to put this in front of you. I know we had talked about certain positions to interview by the board and certain ones not to. This is a position that would not be interviewed by the board unless you guys see differently. Assuming all goes well, we would do her background checks and everything else. Her first day of employment would be Monday, October twenty-second.
I read it.
So if this board is, has any questions, I mean Rory can answer in a little bit more detail. If not, if you're, we'll move forward with her at least initial hiring pending her background checks and everything else. So any questions, comments, thoughts? Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion that the town of Seymour hire Christine Sedita for the position of town hall floater, which is a listed position in the clerks' union contract, with a start date of Monday, October twenty-second, passing, or pending the passing of all related background checks. Motion by Al, second by Stephan. Is there any more discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained. Let's hear about that. Motion passes six-zero. Item number ten, oh, Monica, by the way, did you mark when Karen came into the meeting? Item number ten, discussion take possible action regarding, oh, no, excuse me. Item number nine, apologize. Discussion take possible action regarding thirty-eight Nickel Street blight fine. Okay, in your packets, and then also hand it out to you tonight. You have some information. The first is a letter that was sent to us from the homeowner that came in on the September seventeenth. We have the notice of blight violation letter that was sent by Blight Enforcement Officer Margansky on June eleventh. And then we also have a building permit that was applied for back in the early part of September. You can see that information. And then passed out tonight is an email from Blight Officer Margansky to Rory, just kind of giving us an update on this, so you can see all of the information. So where we are with this, blight violations or fines have been accumulating. A building permit cannot be taken out if there are outstanding fines attached to the property. As we all know, these fines accumulated a hundred dollars per day. The address, as we mentioned, is thirty-eight Nickel Street. The owner of the property, as you can see by the letter that he submitted on September seventeenth, is looking to do work to the home. Being able to pay the fine would present a hardship to him being able to do this work. So we, as the Board of Selectmen, have the ability to waive, change, alter, do different stipulations with regards to these fines. So we wanted to put it in front of this board, see what the board's pleasure was, and then move forward. As you can see Mike's recommendations, Mike, in the last paragraph of his email, "I do not recommend lowering the fines that have accrued since July sixth, two thousand and eighteen. The town should accept that amount, and the building permit, the lien remains against the property until the violation has been satisfactory remediated." So Rory, is there anything I missed that you want to add? So you have to wait until your call, please.
Can I ask a question?
Hold on, let Rory just finish his thing first, and then you can go.
Everything should be even better.
Okay. All right, so nothing I missed in the little run-up to it? Okay. Trish?
Reading the homeowner's letter, says just purchased property a few months ago. What does that mean? What date was that property purchased? Was it purchased and disrepair?
Well, yes, but, so are you the homeowner? So why don't you come forward, state your name and address for the record, and then you can address the board, and then answer any questions. Just make sure you're talking to the mic, though, okay?
My name is Benito Yurgales, and I live in New Haven, twenty-two Oakley Street.
But you own the property of thirty-eight?
Yeah, I own the property on thirty-eight Nickel Street. I purchased in April, I believe, and I've been trying to work on the property since then, but I have some personal issues before in June, so that's why I didn't start the work on the property, actually.
Can we direct press questions to the homeowner, or do we have?
You can direct question. I know you wanted to say cross-examine, but you can go ahead and direct questions.
I do not want to say cross-examine. Don't worry.
Yes, you may direct questions directly to the homeowner.
What are your honest intentions, not owning the property but not being a resident in town? What are your ultimate intentions?
Well, first, fix the property, and then decide it, because I've been trying to work with my wife, and trying to move here, but she does, in the meantime, she doesn't want to move. But now I'm gonna fix the property, and I guess I'm gonna sell it.
What are you looking at as a timeframe to fix the property?
Oh, later six months, mostly. All depends on coordination with everybody.
Okay.
Yeah, the building permits are good for a hundred and eighty days.
And you have the funds, you have the, not to get too personal, but you have the funds to fix the property and clean it up?
Well, yeah, that was one of the issues, like, when I said personal issues, I had to go back to my country, South America, and in the meantime, when I come back, I received the letter, but I didn't have the funds, because the other project I had, it was behind. Now I have the funds for that.
Okay. My other question, the seven thousand dollars in the letter, is that referring to permit fees or to the fines that are owed that are holding it up?
In which letter?
From Mr. Yurgales. He mentioned seven thousand, the department wants me to pay seven thousand. That's not building fees.
He's referring to fines.
Well, actually, right now, it's, I spoke yesterday with the.
A hundred dollars a day.
Inspector.
Yeah, it's accruing.
And he said I had to pay to him seven thousand plus another two thousand dollars now, because it's another twenty days since I spoke with him last week, two weeks ago.
Okay. So here is my question. Understanding, and I respect the Blight Officer's letter, but I certainly, for one, don't want to make it so prohibitive to prevent an owner from fixing up the property with so many fines in place that they will now not have the funds to fix it up, and now it's going to remain a blighted property. If, I don't know what the protocol is, if we are given a timeframe of when these fixes will be made. If we waive these now, can they be retroactive if the fixes are not made to the property? Or how does that work?
Well, first off, we would never waive the fees unless we plan to waive them entirely. We could potentially suspend them if work is being done.
Okay.
Put a timeline on it, and if the work is not done, it would revert all the way back to day one.
Okay.
So there's things like that that can be done. So we could say, as an example, right now, we're gonna cap the fine at five thousand dollars, allow them to pay the money, get the building permit, do the work, have the work completed in a hundred and eighty days. If it's not completed in a hundred and eighty days, then the fine goes back as if it had been running the entire time.
Okay.
I mean, Rich, if you want to jump in.
You could do a number of different things. Another thing you could do is move to waive the blight fine prohibition on pulling the building permit, so he's able to pull the building permit, and then when he completes the, and let him know that when the work is completed to the satisfaction of the building official, you then have the power to waive all of it or some of it.
Okay.
So I would think the purpose, all right, so what's the purpose behind the blight program, right? The purpose is to acquire those properties that are abandoned and blighted and serve as, you know, an eyesore for the neighbors and for the neighborhood, where secondarily, the more, another beneficial purpose is to encourage the property owner to clean it up. You don't really want to own the property, you want to assist them in moving forward. Here you have a new homeowner, someone who didn't cause the blight, who acquired it, who wants to go forward. And when I look at the building department papers here, the, I think they valued the work at forty-eight thousand, building official, so that's a substantial investment. So you may want to waive the prohibition on pulling the building permit. I think you would do that right away, tonight, and you could waive the blight lien upon the satisfactory completion of the work. You could do that, if you want it. In the event the work is not completed, the blight lien remains.
Okay. So I'm just, I'm a direct person, so I just want you to hear what I'm saying. I have a heart, and I would support myself, I can't speak for everyone here, giving you an opportunity to fix the property and not prohibit you any further from doing that by taking more funds away from you that you struggled to come up with to begin with. However, if you don't follow through within a timeframe that we agree is reasonable, and the one thing I am concerned about from the Blight Officer, I'm, again, just being straightforward, is he said you were difficult to work with. I wasn't there, but I would expect you to work with the parties that are involved, to come up to a solution, not be difficult, get as much of the work done as you can and show progress over the period of time you say is required, because if you don't do any of that, my heart kind of shrinks.
Boy, I got that.
So if it came back in front of me, it would be really easy for me to say, you know, no more extension, and the fine's gonna have to stand, so. That's all I say frankly to you, sir, is just, you know, work diligently, do the best you can, what you need to do. I respect you bought a blighted property, but unfortunately, it's now your responsibility, so that's where I would stand with the situation.
Well, that's why I'm here, because the property was there for, nobody was in the house for three years with no roof. That's where I, where I was told by my lawyer, the house had no roof for three years when I purchased the property. So I, day one, I went to put a tarp there, clean up, close the doors, close the windows, but I didn't start right away. And I didn't try to start with no permits or anything like that. I spoke with, I came to the town first, I tried to pull a permit, and they told me I had to call the inspector first. So I talked to him, and he was away, but he called me back, and he told me to go back, pull a permit, and then we deal later with the fines. But when I pulled the permit, he called me back, he said, the permit's not good. So he told me I had to come up with seven thousand, sixty-eight thousand, I mean, sixty thou, six thousand eight hundred dollars that time. And he said, now it's two more days, so it's seven thousand dollars. And I don't see it was right, I didn't think it was right, because the house was there for another, for three years before me, and for two or three months I was there, and they were finding, they're trying to find me seven thousand dollars, but now they say, he say I had to come up with nine thousand dollars. So that's why I told him I gotta let the lawyer take care of that, or I called back to the office for the selectmen, and they told me to come in here and deal with this.
Okay. All right, well, that's where I stand.
You, so that, you bought that house with a pretty damaged roof?
Yes.
Right. Do you have a roofing company, I believe?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so you own a roofing company. Did you buy that with the intention of fixing that to sell at that time?
No, no. That time, my wife was gonna move to McDonald's in this area, so she's a store manager in Clinton, and she was trying to move into Seymour, I guess she was gonna get a transfer here. But in the last couple months, we had a lot of problems, personal problems in Ecuador, so she's not staying there. So now I'm with the house, and now I have to fix. But I've been doing these projects like this before, so it's not, it's not new to fix the house, for me.
Anybody else?
I think we should, Rich proposed, give the gentleman a chance, and then see how it goes.
What's a realistic timeframe for you to complete this work?
I would say, before you answer, I would just caution, be very honest, so don't try to just tell us what you, what we want to hear, because it could come back to bite you.
Well, that's why I told the inspector, the latest is going to be six months, because we don't know what's going to come, I don't know what's going to come out in the meantime, in this winter, so.
When do you plan to start the work?
Well, I tried to start two weeks ago.
So if we were to waive the prohibition to allow you to get the building permit, you can get a building permit tomorrow, when would you start?
I can start on Friday or Saturday. Saturday, actually, yeah, not Friday, Saturday.
And would this be a full-time, or is this going to be at nights, weekends type thing?
No, it's going to be daytime, not nights.
And obviously, you're going to start with the shell of the house first.
Well, I had to.
I mean, the roof and everything else.
Yeah, I had to gather and reframe the back part of the house, because that's the damaged part.
Right.
It's been with no roof for three years, that's what I was told by the lawyer.
Okay.
Before I purchased.
So is three months reasonable?
I would say four.
I mean, to Stefan's point, I mean, you need to be honest, because if the day we agreed to comes and goes, and the work is not done, this fine will have still been running since July, July 6th.
I will agree for four, four months.
Well, he just said six.
I say six, but that's the latest I can, I told.
Well, no, I said the permit is available for six months, from that until you have to renew it.
I, because.
And you're running into winters.
Right, I want to be cognizant of whether.
That's what I'm saying, you need to tell us what you can honestly do.
Well, I can do in the six months.
Because I don't want to see you put a lot of money into this house, not meet your obligations.
Does it depend on the weather?
Well, that's what we're talking.
Well, we could, but I mean.
So with weather, six months you're.
Well, I need a couple weeks for roofing and framing, that's the main thing.
Okay.
So, I mean, we need to establish a time, a date, and then we can determine based on weather and other outstanding circumstances if we want to extend that time period. I'm not going to leave it vague that, well, weather, well, he can argue it rained three days and I couldn't rain.
Well, he keeps saying six months, I know we were saying four, but six months is.
Yeah. I mean, it would seem to me, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It would seem to me that if we went through, you know, six weeks, I'm sorry, six days of really bad weather, that we'd have to give it an extension.
We can make that determination, Karen, that's what I'm saying.
Well, that's.
We would do that.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'm sorry.
Can I add one thing? So, that's one thing to fix the roof of the house, but the outside maintenance, like the lawn and all those things.
Well, that.
That has to go regardless.
Yeah, well, that, a couple days, that's not an issue.
If the grass is cut, the roof is fixed, and the framing is done?
Well, the grass been cut.
No, what I'm saying is, then the blight officer is not going to pay any attention, because he's not going to know what's going on in the inside of the house.
Correct.
So if you get the outside part, the shell of the house all done, the roof done, framing done, sided, the grass cut and everything else, the blight officer's not going to be bothering you.
Well, yeah, I understand that.
And if it takes you two years to do the inside of the house, that's, that's up to you.
Yeah.
Well, no, it's not going, I'm not.
But you know what I'm saying, it doesn't, the blight doesn't have anything to do with the inside of your home.
Okay, so if that's the case, two months, it will be fixed outside.
Let me just set a date, April 5th, Friday, April 5th.
I just want to.
Yeah, I'm.
Are you coming?
For a little.
It's whatever the pleasure of the board is, I'm not, just want to make sure everybody understands that, everything.
I just don't want to see a deadline.
There has to be.
Well, it's six months, it's.
Well, there has to be a deadline.
For this to happen, Karen, as much as I would probably argue for a much longer deadline than most, there has to be some sort of deadline.
There's got, there's got to be a stick.
I agree with Al though, Al said April 5th, that's six months.
I think that's fair.
Yes.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
I was trying to be realistic with inspector, so that six months, it's anybody can do.
But in the meantime.
There's nothing wrong with finishing sooner.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
Nothing wrong with that.
I agree that, nothing wrong with that.
But easy things, don't wait till like April 3rd to mow the lawn.
No.
Keep up with it, so you're not drawing the attention of the blight officer.
Morning, the lawn is.
When you finish, you come back and ask for the waiver of the blight, with the reason for which you approach, because you're going to go out, you're going to do the work, and at some point, somebody will sign off on everything, right? When he signs off on everything, you come back to this board to ask for the waiver. Maybe he won't help you with that, maybe he won't be taking part in this, perhaps, because you have to send them another letter, say I finished, here's my certificate of occupancy, the permit is closed out.
Stefan, you want to?
Thank you. I would just like to clarify that the date that we set, and I think Kurt made this point, but I just want to be very clear, you have to just be in compliance with the blight ordinance. So, you don't have to complete all of the work from the permit you pull in that time, if it's, some of it's inside.
Correct.
So you just have to clear up the yard, the roof, the framing, all that stuff, that's going to be visible to neighbors, and it's going to, the reason that we're in this mess initially. So, my recommendation would be prioritize those things. I think six months is a reasonable time to do it. Don't, don't, I'm glad that we didn't, you didn't end up agreeing to two months, because I don't, I don't know if that's, is realistic, so I'm glad we did six months, to account for weather and everything. And just one other comment I would have, and this is not for you, this is more for us, I think, first of all, I give you credit for showing up to the meeting tonight, thank you, and stating your case, but I think the blight officer also should have been here.
He was unable to be here tonight.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
He just got back from, in fairness to him, he just got back from North Carolina.
Okay.
So he's trying to catch up with.
Yeah, sure, I'm not, I'm not necessarily passing judgment on his reasons for being here and not being here, but in a case like this, which is, you know, as impactful to his, to your life as possible, I think the professional thing to do would be to have the blight officer here, because as he alluded to you being difficult to work with, I've heard quite the opposite in other cases of the town being difficult to work with on things like this, so I would like to just make sure everybody's here and has their say.
And I think if you're talking about a CO, you need the, you know, officer here.
Why a CO, it's got to be finished, oh, yeah.
Well, Karen, I wouldn't say mountain out of a mocho, if you drove by 38 Nickel Street, house is bad, I mean, bad, bad.
It is.
It's awful. I would not want to live next to it, so I feel for the people in that neighborhood.
People around that community have to.
All I'm saying is.
The next door neighbor calls us religiously. The next door neighbor, at the 38 Nickel Street, calls my office religiously. I complain about the house religiously.
Okay.
So, but, I mean, but in fairness to him, the house was unoccupied, the person who owned it essentially just walked away, so there's not much we can do. He bought it, obviously, to fix it up, you know, there's been some back and forth between him and the blight officer, but that's water under the bridge at this point, we're just going to move forward.
All right.
And that's why I think it's kind of.
Sorry, I just, it just seems to me that there seems to be some coverage here.
Attorney Batula, how much do we, what exactly do we need to do?
The motion, the blight warning prohibition on pulling the building permit, setting an end of this deadline for consideration of the blight.
All right, I'll entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Trish, second by Al.
Just under discussion, everybody understands what we're doing.
Yes.
So if the, so the April 5th deadline, so we would take that under consideration at our April whatever, 13th or 15th or 12th or whatever, the third.
Yeah, can we put that stipulation on the roof itself, and then the external blight stuff, like the, just the upkeep and things like that, not be a part of that, that he has to maintain that? Because I understand the roof taking that time, but all that other stuff's got to be done.
He has to, what he has to do is, he received a blight letter which outlines exactly what's wrong and what he's being fined for. So Mike will continue to visit the site and provide updates on this letter. So once this work is complete, then he's met his responsibility with regards to blight.
And that's the work that you want to do first?
Quite frankly, people get hung up on grass all the time, but grass isn't growing anymore, we're done with that. If you cut it recently, we're done with that till April, really.
Yeah.
Grass is.
Yeah, well, that's, that's probably a.
You know how fast it's been growing lately?
It's been raining for four hours, it's going to be 80 degrees tomorrow.
Cutting it twice a week.
I'd drive by your house and laugh next week.
I live at my lawn a lot longer than a lot of people at Blight, I think, but.
All right, so sir, all kidding aside, you understand.
Yeah.
You need to have all of the issues with regards to the blight letter, you need to have it all addressed by April 5th.
So.
So I recommend that you get with the blight official and the building inspector, have these conversations, and make sure you're doing what you need to be done, because if April 6th comes, and you have not satisfied this, this $100 fine will have been running since July 6th of 2018.
I get it.
So you will owe us into tens of thousands of dollars at that point.
Oh, my God. I do wish you the best of luck.
So I just want to make sure you, before we vote, just want to make sure you understand and you accept what's being.
Well, I understand that, and I'm trying to, like I said, I was wanting to start when I pulled the permit, but then he called me, said, the permit's not good, so.
And again, I strongly encourage you to remain in contact with the building inspector and the blight official on a regular basis, just keep them updated on what you're doing, what's going on, the more information they have, the more lenient they're going to be as they move along.
And any holdups or hiccups along the way, I think you should, you would do well to tell us about it immediately, so we know, so we don't come back in April, and now the bill is $25,000, but you ran into a problem on November 1st, you know?
Yeah.
So.
So does Kurt.
Just keep us updated, keep us updated, and it's particularly the blight officer updated.
Does the building department get notified by your office that we're allowing the permits to go forward with the?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, we'll provide a memo to them, to Jim tomorrow.
No, because that was, that's why I'm here, because he was demanding that 9,000 dollars now. Say, when I told them I was going to deal with you guys, and he say, you cannot deal with anybody, you got to deal with me. I said, okay, I'm sorry, I cannot deal with you, I got to talk to the lawyer, see what happens.
Kurt will handle that tomorrow.
Okay, great.
All right, so everyone knows what we're doing, everybody's comfortable?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
Okay, hearing now, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstained. Cheer vote time, motion passes 6-0. Item number 10, discussion, take possible action regarding combining Memorial Day Parade and Christmas Parade Committees.
So move.
Well, all right, so I'm not sure who's going to speak, Mr. Lang, Mr. Stanek, Mr. Danker, is it going to be a tag team effort? Whoever's going to speak, please go to the microphone.
I'll let Fred start it off.
I'd like to speak.
Well, it's not your turn yet.
I'm sorry.
You're going to wait your turn.
Hi, Alex Danker, 203.
You're going to raise your hand. Alex, please go ahead.
Hi, after finding out that the chair of the parade committee resigned last year, Kurt approached me and asked that, could we handle the Christmas parade? And we, Memorial Day graciously said, of course. I just want to make sure that, reaffirming that, this is make it, instead of a Memorial Day and a Christmas Parade Committee, that we just make it one parade committee. The only thing that we want to do is have two different treasurers, one for Memorial Day and one for the, for.
Christmas.
Parade. And just to reaffirm that this is what we're doing, and the town supports it.
Okay. All right, so Rich, we currently have a Memorial Day Parade Committee and a Christmas Parade Committee. We need to dissolve the two committees, create one, and then appoint people to it? Or?
Are you making new appointments, would that be the intention, versus what the folks that are presently on the two committees?
Yeah, we're just going to be bringing, yeah, we're going to bring everybody together.
You do a motion to merge the two committees together and name it the Seymour Parade Committee.
Okay. Mr. Lang, is there anything you'd like to add?
It's add something, but not, we're having a agenda for the end of November, it's adding a bit of a break to the microphone.
Fred, say something.
I didn't want to go take it away from Rich, I'll let Bob talk.
Go ahead, Bobby, explain what you have to go on the board.
Hi, Robert Lang, 27 Wood Street, Seymour. Yes, I was in favor of this change, as I talked, I talked to Kurt last year, saying I'd asked to be replaced as chairman of the parade committee for the Christmas Parade. I've been with you for 47 years, and I thought it's time for a change, and Alex volunteered to run the parade for both groups together. So I'm definitely in favor of having the Christmas Parade and Memorial Day Parade Committees be combined. We have people from both committees willing to merge together and keep the parades going for many, many years, hopefully. I had one more consideration, too, that I don't know whether we can do it tonight or not. For many, many years, well, when the parade began, I was there in 1971, the parade was held on the day after Thanksgiving, a Friday. After a few years, it was changed to a Saturday after Thanksgiving, it was held that way for a few more years, and we changed it to the Sunday after Thanksgiving, which has been to the last probably 10 or 15 years. I would like to, if possible, have the parade on the Saturday after Thanksgiving, with the next day being the rain date. The problem is, if we have the parade on the Sunday after Thanksgiving, every five or six years, the parade has rained out. If it's rained out, and we have it the following Sunday, two things will happen. Quite a few of the units will drop out, and the spectators will be a lot smaller. If it's possible to do it on a Saturday with a Sunday being a rain date, it would be much more successful. You can guarantee me it'll never rain then, it doesn't matter, but we can't do that, so. A Saturday parade with a Sunday rain date works best, if we can do that.
The only drawback to that, or pushback that I get, is that small business Saturday, and the downtown merchants go crazy.
One of the problems.
So that, I mean, that's the only drawback to it, that I know, but I'm sure that's something the parade committee could review and discuss and.
But we'll need to know pretty soon, because normally about this time, I still have the invitation, it's about six months before the parade, so we need to know the date of the parade, so I can get the invitations sent out, that's what we're waiting for.
I wouldn't, well, I'm not going to speak for the entire board, but I wouldn't change it for 2018.
Would it be, okay.
Would it be easier to do it the following Saturday, after Thanksgiving, and it won't be Small Business Saturday then?
I don't think it matters, and again, I don't want to speak for everybody, I don't think it matters.
Because that's usually Good Friday, I mean, sorry, did I say Good Friday? Black Friday, and then now they call it Black Saturday, you know, for shopping, maybe doing it the following Saturday?
That would be up to the board.
I'm just asking.
I mean, I think this new committee would make a recommendation to the Board of Selectment. I don't know if you have enough time to do it for 2018, is what I'm saying. I think it's too soon, or too late.
Oh, but you're too, too fast.
Yes, but I think that's something that this board can consider for 2019. Mr. Stanek, I know you wanted to comment last week, but.
Yes.
And Karen seems to want you to talk to, so.
I prefer him to.
Good evening, Fred Stanek, 22 North Benham Road, I'm a member of the parades committee or Memorial Day Committee, and I think this is a great idea to combine the two committees, and I do think it's necessary to reaffirm the membership, there are members of both committees who are willing to continue to serve, and I would suggest that the Board of Selectment, perhaps at the next meeting, just reaffirm the membership.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stanek. All right, so board member questions, concerns, comments, other than Karen who's trying to vote yes before we even have a motion?
I'm voting yes.
Karen, we don't have a motion yet.
Yes.
And maybe voting to throw Fred off the committee, you voting yes for that?
Voting yes.
Trish, you're good, Bob?
Good.
Yeah?
Good.
Bob?
Trish.
Trish said she's good.
Thumbs up.
All right, so Rich, the motion would be.
To merge the Memorial Day Parade and Christmas Parade Committees into, you can be entitled Seymour Parade.
And then we'll reappoint everyone.
We'll reappoint everyone.
At the next meeting.
Fred.
Okay. All right, would someone like to make that motion?
I, me.
Okay, motion made by Karen, second by Al, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, cheer vote time, motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Item number 11, discussion and take possible action regarding Seymour's 175th Anniversary Celebration.
Mr. Danker, please start off with the budget.
I'm addressing the board tonight.
This is my new husband.
We have, we have four-
Twenty twenty-five.
I'm gonna make this very simple. I just, I'm not gonna go with numbers tonight. I'm not going with anything. My request is being put on the agenda, and after talking to Rory, who gave me a great understanding of how this process works. And thank you, Rory. I'd like to ask that the Board of Selectmen formally put together 175th Anniversary Committee first. That way, we could come up, hopefully by December, working as a team with the budget numbers you needed for the next fiscal year, we're suggesting.
So move.
Alright, well, before we actually make a motion and vote Karen, maybe-
Oh, I can't do that.
Maybe others can ask a question?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Very excited tonight. Stefan?
Alex, for the record, what-
I love him.
Oh, God.
That wasn't me that said that.
There's one.
Just go on the record and say, "I love you," for the record.
Trish is the one deciding.
Can you please state what year the Seymour 175th Anniversary Celebration will take place?
Twenty twenty-five.
Seymour's 1850.
June 24th.
I would like that on the record, though.
Okay.
June 24th, you have the date picked out.
Our anniversary.
Well, is that, is that the date that it's gonna be?
Seven fifty-eight.
It's eighteen fifty.
Right. So, you have the, is, are we gonna celebrate it on the 24th?
Uh, yeah, so I wanna do like, like we talked about before. I was the other Selectman.
I think they're planning a week of, or several days.
We're thinking of doing, like, just a really quick breakdown. Just so you know, I'm not gonna get into details. I wanna do 24 days of celebration in June, such as, like, for an example, like, one night is at Great Hill Firehose, one night is at Citizens, like, open houses, one night at PD, one night reenactment, something at Town Hall. So, every night, a little bit of part of all the towns, buildings, and has a little part of our 175th Celebration.
And what do you need for this committee?
This committee is-
You just want a five-person standard committee?
If we could do seven would be great. The more help, because this is something that's not gonna-
Do you have six other people interested?
I will, I will find people by the next meeting for you to appoint.
So, my, my only concern is keeping, particularly if it's seven, but keeping a committee like this going for the next seven years.
Four. Budgets, budget money reason. Wait, we have what? Eighteen, right? Yeah, seven, six years.
Four and nineteen.
Um, yeah, I'm talking for money.
Starts at nineteen, sorry. Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Alright, so.
So, it's five budget years.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I know what you were saying in the years, yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, it seems like a tall order to me, to keep a committee going for that long, any committee, um, but, you know, if you-
It's not like a-
Think it's necessary, you think we wanna pound forward with it, I'm not gonna get in your way.
I don't think it's something that we'll meet, I mean, we'll meet for the next couple, few times before the year's up to present some kind of figures, what we're looking for, so, uh, Mr. Miller could put something in his budget, so we could start saving for the next-
So, you wanna proactively budget for this, is what you're trying to?
Yes. So, at the end of the, so in 2025, we don't have, "Hey, I need such a dollars," and everybody's jaw drops, and they said they can't fund it. But if we do a little bit every year, it'll help keep, won't look, so, normally, see, a lot of money.
Okay. That's it for me. Any other comments or thoughts?
Yes.
Karen, talk into the microphone. My mother's gonna yell at you, I'm telling you.
I don't want your mother to yell at me.
Then I talk into the microphone.
Clearly, if we, please, if we bring in food trucks, we can make some money.
We could do some, you know, we could, we could talk about that when it comes up. We could do, maybe have some also fundraising. If the committee decides to do some fundraising down the road, you know, to help fund this down the road, too, so it's not just an expense on the board. We could discuss that, but yes, we can have food trucks there at these events that we plan.
Okay, Trish or Bob, any?
Just a thought.
Are you recommending a size of, you said seven, does it matter, five or seven?
Five, I mean, listen, this, yes, this might be hard to hold seven. Reason is, is a lot of people can't make it to sometimes the meetings. So, I know sometimes to have a little bit more people to have a quorum to make some decisions would be easier, because as it's, I know what Stefan's saying, it's, it's something being so far away, some people don't commit as well. But if we have some extra people as backup, we can continue doing what we wanna do.
Is this something the parade committee could take on?
I think the parade committee could take it on as a subcommittee to start with a budget. We could talk, you know, as how much what we want and how much we wanna for you to present in your budget, and then maybe coming, going forward, actually make a committee for it, because it is a, the parade, it does take three or four months for the Christmas. It does take four or five months of talking for the Memorial Day. We meet every, every month. We could add it to our agenda and go forward with it, but it's not really a parade. It's, you know, it's a separate committee.
Well, I think to Stefan's point, maybe over the next couple of years, you guys can kind of build it, and then as we get, you know, maybe two or three years away, then maybe we have an official committee that sets up the running of the event. That way, people aren't overwhelmed and-
Yeah, it seems like this is gonna be, you're gonna have some upfront work to come up with, with budget figures that you have as an idea. And then you're probably gonna have two to maybe three years of not really having anything to do until the planning really begins in earnest, a year to, to a year and a half out.
Right.
That's how I would envision it, and I think forming a committee now or in the near term and trying to maintain that committee with full membership through those two to three years is gonna be very difficult.
I agree.
We can't keep committees that meet every month together sometimes, you know?
I agree. I think that's a great idea. Have the, uh-
So, yeah, I think the-
Parade Committee, it'll be like a sub to the 175th until we come up with what we need to get a committee together, that one is closer. That's a great suggestion. Thank you.
So, we'll put, well, I'll put a placeholder in the budget for this event, and we'll need a number before the holidays, Christmas.
Okay, let's see what holiday.
You know.
Depending on the size of the number as well. If it's 5,000, that's one thing. If you need 25,000, that's entirely different.
A year? That'd be great.
Well, that's what I mean, so you gotta let us know. Gotta let us know. Alright, anything else on this?
I, I, I just think that, you know, putting, putting together, putting together a Memorial Day Parade and putting together a Christmas Parade, it's not that difficult. I mean, I ran dances. I ran homecoming at high school, at the high school. It's not that difficult.
Well, you make it very easy, because you sit on the board with us.
I'm, I, I, well, I'm on your board now.
That's why I said you make it very easy for us.
Thank you very much, but I mean, and I, and I'm very grateful for that, since I was taking off of the other committee that I used to be on.
Well, we love to have you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Alex.
Thank you, guys.
But I, I, I just feel that you are so capable of doing this. I really do.
Well, he's, he's gonna do it, so.
We're all gonna do it, Karen, and then we'll go forward with it.
Okay, we'll move on-
We'll do it.
We'll move on to item number 12. Discussion, take possible action regarding Sherri E. Weiss' proclamation.
Oh, I so am in favor of this.
Well, can I read it first?
Of course.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Proclamation.
I just, I, I read, I did my minutes.
Can I read it?
Sure.
Thank you. The town, whereas, "The town of Seymour wishes to congratulate and thank Ms. Sherri E. Weiss, organist and music director of the Seymour Congregational Church on her retirement celebrated on October 14, 2018. And whereas, she has creatively, artistically, caringly, and dutifully served God, the Seymour Congregational Church and the town of Seymour for over 61 years, since 1956. And whereas, her considerable contributions to her church and our community are innumerable and have touched the lives of many. And whereas, her stepping down will be a great loss to her congregation and to the town of Seymour. Then it be therefore resolved that I, W. Kurt Miller, First Selectman of the Town of Seymour, Connecticut, do hereby proclaim Saturday, October 14, 2018, to be a day of thanks and recognition for Ms. Sherri E. Weiss. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hands and so on and so forth on October 14."
So move.
Okay, so Karen has made the motion to accept the proclamation as read. Is there a second?
That was Saturday, the 14th or Sunday?
Sunday, October 14th.
Did I say Saturday? You said Saturday.
I'll say, sorry. Saturday, October 14th. So, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Al. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just on the bottom, the 10th day of October. Is that a typo or is that when you planned to sign?
That's when I planned to sign.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes high, motion passes six zero. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to add to the agenda, discussion of possible action regarding day of celebration for Shady Knoll Health Center in Seymour. Motion by Trish, second by Stefan. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes high, motion passes six zero. Next item on the agenda, discussion of possible action regarding day of celebration for Shady Knoll Healthcare Center in Seymour. On the tables tonight, there's a proclamation. Whereas, Shady Knoll Health Center was incorporated on May 22nd, 1993 by its founder, Larry Santilli, President and Chief Executive Officer of Anthem Healthcare Systems. And the staff of Shady Knoll Health Center has been recognized by numerous local, regional, and national publications for excellence in care over the last 25 years. And whereas, Shady Knoll Health Center remains a healthcare leader and employer of choice in the greater Seymour and Nogatuck Valley region through a continually changing healthcare and employment environment. And whereas, Shady Knoll Health Center has evolved from a 90-bed skilled nursing center to a 128-bed center accommodating short-term post-hospital care patients requiring 24-hour rehabilitation and skilled nursing care, as well as traditional long-term care, hospice care, and short-term respite stays. Then be it therefore resolved that I, W. Kurt Miller, First Selectman of Seymour, Connecticut, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, October 10, 2018, to be a day of celebration, recognizing Shady Knoll's contributions to the town of Seymour. And this will be signed on, actually, today, if approved by the board.
May I just say, my father was the first patient in Shady Knoll somewhat.
Would you like to make the motion then, Karen?
Please, may I make the motion?
Motion to approve the proclamation as read by Karen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes high, motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item on the agenda, item number 13, discussion, take possible action regarding Little League tax abatement. In your packets, you have a letter to the board from President William Reggani. And Mr. Lang, if you can just pass on to Bill that we're not all gentlemen on this board. Just where he titles the letter, it says, "Gentlemen, on behalf of the George J. Hummel Little League, I would like to request an abatement of the property tax on our property at 12 Chestnut Street. As you know, we are a 501(c)(3) not-profit organization. The issue which causes the tax collector to bill George J. Hummel Little League stems from a stipulation in the agreement in 1950, in which Dr. John Casa Grant donated the property to George J. Hummel Little League with the stipulation that, in the event of the dissolution of our league, the property reverts back to the Casa Grant family. In previous years, you granted an abatement of the taxes, and we are requesting a similar abatement this year. Sincerely, William Reggani, President, George J. Hummel Little League." Okay, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion that the Board of Selectmen waive the taxes due for Casa Grant Field paid by George J. Hummel Little League.
So move.
Motion by Stefan, second by Bob. Is there any discussion or questions?
The only other thing, I, I know we do this year on year.
Yeah.
And I know I've asked you this before. There is no way to make this process simpler at all.
Nope.
Has to, every year, they have to come up front of the board like that.
Yes. Is there any questions, comments, thoughts? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Cheer votes high, motion passes six zero. Well, Mr. Lang, did you want to add something?
Yes, on behalf of the board, thank you very much. I apologize for one thing. In the heading of the letter, I used the word gentleman. I apologize to that, to the ladies on the committee. That was awful on my part.
I know where you live. Nice again.
And Al's also not much of a gentleman either, so.
Well, Bill, the two, he signed it.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Lang. Alright, item number 14, discussion, take possible action regarding CERC proposal. Okay, as we've discussed in past meetings, we're looking at ways to handle economic development going forward. One of the things that the Economic Development Committee is looking at is forming a relationship with CERC, which is the Connecticut Economic Resource Center. This is a proposal that they sent over as to how we would do that. I wanted to provide this information, give everybody the opportunity to review it. EDC has yet to meet and form a formal opinion, so I think it would be premature of us to take any action until they actually weigh in and have their meeting. So, our goal is to have this on the agenda for discussion and approval at our next meeting, assuming that EDC has an opportunity to get together and meet. So, Rory is working with, with Chris on that to make sure that a meeting is set up. So, again, I just wanted to give this to everybody, give you the opportunity to review it, so you're prepared. Our intention is to have CERC, assuming EDC wants to move forward with this, which I believe they do, but our goal is to have CERC at the next meeting, so that way they can answer questions that the board has directly. Okay, this is more informational than, than anything else. Item number 15, discussion, take possible action regarding 26 Bank Street Tax Incentive Application. Okay, we received a tax incentive application for 22 Bank Street, which is the building, one of the buildings owned downtown by Joe McGanney. You can see all of the information that has been provided. He provided an initial application, and then he provided us updated numbers upon completion. There was a, a big difference in the two. So, that's one of the reasons why we do it the way that we do do it. So, based on our tax incentive program, and not that anyone has it in front of them, but on page four, section E, incentive levels, if an investment is $50,000 to $499,999, the property tax abatement level established by the Board of Selectmen shall be no less than 30% of such investment and no greater than 50%, and the abatement timeframe shall be for a period of three years. So, with the investment that was made by Mr. McGanney after review and discussion, we would like to put forward to the board a recommendation of a 40% abatement for the three-year period. Again, this is a 40% abatement on the change in assessed value based on the work that was done. This is not an overall reduction in abatement. So, again, this is the normal course of action that we take with these. This was approved way back when by the Board of Selectmen. Some of us were members then, some of us weren't, but, um, so, any thoughts?
Yeah, um, can you just give a quick rundown of what the improvements were?
Um, in the, the area above the, Rory, correct me if I'm wrong, above the cupcake shop, and right in the glass blower up there, they took the top floor and they essentially converted it into artist-type lofts, where a smaller business could essentially run their operation out of there. So, they're actually very nice. We went up and toured it. It's, it's nice. They certainly cleaned the building up, made it look nice, usable space. I do believe they are all rented to small businesses, artists.
So, it's, it's being used for commercial use right now?
Yes. Oh, there is no residential use allowed in it.
Oh, yeah.
Because I specifically asked that question? Because one of the apartment right on the corner overlooking Bank Street was beautiful, and I said this would be a great place for an apartment. Joe said absolutely not, under no circumstances, so. It was only a matter of time till I got kicked out of the house, so it'd be a good place to go. Okay, anything else? Any other questions, comments?
Uh, just, yeah, one more. Um, sorry, that just came to me. Where did the 40% come from? It's between the 30 and 50, but-
Yeah, well, it's, you know, if you look at it, it's a little less, um, if you add in the work that was done, plus some of the personal property that's been put in there, it kind of falls right in the middle of the amount, so that's pretty much what- Where the recommendation is coming from.
And we, as a board, do we have the ability to, and I'm not suggesting necessarily that we would do this, but do we have the ability to give no tax incentive whatsoever, or are we mandated now to give some sort of tax incentive?
Uh, no, all, and Rich, you can speak to this. I mean, all we've done is, we approved that there would be a consideration in the program based on outcome and everything else, and we would determine the final amount.
Yep.
So, I mean, the one thing, if we given assessment, and Rick, correct me if I'm wrong, based on state statute, it's gotta be between, it can't be less than 30, can't be more than 50, and it can't be more than three years.
Okay, I just, yeah, I just wanted to-
But we can vote no, correct?
Yeah, that, that's, that was my understanding. I just wanted to make sure that was clear for everybody, so I'm all set. Thanks.
And listen, I'll go on the record, I'm not a big fan of Mr. McGanney. That's no secret, but in fairness to- but in fairness to him, he took a building and he renovated, and it now has usable space, so I think he should be afforded the benefit that others have been afforded.
Kurt, I might not have understood your answer, but to Stephon's point, again, I understand it's between 30 and 50, 40 is a nice figure in the middle, but is that, is that dependent on a figure? How do we arrive at what percentage we're going to offer?
Um, is part of your attachment? He broke down some of the information. And if you actually look at his numbers, you know, you're in the neighborhood of, you know, 250, 260, right in there? So that's kind of halfway in between?
Oh, you mean in between the tiers?
Uh, yeah, of the, yeah.
I see what you mean.
Yeah, he's, he didn't reach the full 49999, but it's not 50,000 either.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear.
No, you did not, but now I understand.
Because, you know, legal fees and working capital he has in there, closing costs, computer software, I mean, I'm not...
Sure, but, I get the methodology now.
Let's throw in the legal fees.
I thought it was just like, this is half as ni, half as nice as we think it could potentially be, so we'll give it what it is.
Yeah, no.
All right, well, I didn't see it, so...
All right, well, good point. At least I'm getting hit from both sides, that's, you know, ends of the table.
That wasn't hitting.
No, no, I'm just...
You're pointing at my husband.
Who? All right, so any other comments? No? Okay, so hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes, I, motion passes six zero. Oh, do we didn't, I don't think, we actually, we did make a motion on that.
Nobody made a motion.
Oh, okay, all right, so I'll entertain a motion to offer to Joseph McGanney, owner of 22 Bank Street, Seymour, Connecticut, a tax incentive benefit of 40% for a period of three years for the value of improvements made to his location. Motion by Al, second by Stephon. Now, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes, I, motion passes six zero. Look at you on the first night, nice job. Well done. Well done. All right, item number 16, appointments. We have no appointments this evening? Item number 17, tax refunds and abatements. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to accept the tax collector's September 28, 2018 report as presented by Sue Boland, Deputy Tax Collector.
So move.
Motion by Trish, second by Karen. Is there any discussion? Make sure that there are no issues?
Oh.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes, I, motion passes six zero. Item number 18, our transfers. We have no transfers before us. Item number 19, correspondence. We have a few pieces of correspondence. First is a letter from Senator Kelly, Senator Burtell, and Representative Claritas Dietria with regards to some issues that we have been reporting on Route 8 at Exit 22, that's right by the corner. There's been a, a lot of accidents there, so the state did a study. You can see that information there. One thing that I do want to point out and thank the Board of Public Works, they work directly with the Seymour Police Department. The officers had some concerns about safety coming around the corner because of line-of-sight issues, so the, actually, John Dantona, who has since retired, reached out directly to Public Works, and Tony sent the crew up, and they cut all the trees down behind Karen Fisher's building right over there to improve the sightlines, to make it a little bit safer for our first responders when they're up there, so. We have a letter from Robert Finley, resigning from the Seymour Economic Development Commission due to other commitments, and we have a letter from Karen Baker, resigning from the Livable Communities Commission due to being unable to attend with any regularity. And just as an update, Bruce is, I guess, doing better, but he was certainly enjoy a visitor, so if you're ever out in the area, please let Karen know, she can set up a timer, you can come and see him. I'm sure he would very much enjoy the company, and we hope he has a speedy recovery. Okay, that closes correspondence. Item number 20, public comment. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Okay, hearing no public comment. We'll move on to item number 21, Selectmen's public comments. Stephon?
Almost finished.
Thank you. Karen?
Again, you know, I, I know you guys are sick of hearing this, but the roads need to be painted, and, you know, Holbrook Road, you know, the, the, the trees, it's a disaster.
Karen, I have no new updates since I left here.
And I'm sorry that I, I'm reiterating, you know, myself, but these are things that I really care about. And, you know, I, I, I admire public works, I really do. I truly do. There's some work that needs to be done.
They have, as I said, the line painting has been scheduled, I can't speak to the exact date. Brian has been working on that. The trees, they've been out trimming, but again, they're, when that road is done is when you'll see...
It's not trimming, Kurt. There are huge trees.
Karen, I understand, but again, as we have discussed multiple times, when the road is fixed...
That's what I'm saying. I'm just sorry to reiterate myself.
It's okay, but I mean, the answer's not going to change, though. So, I mean, I can't give you a different answer. So, I mean, major work will be done when the road is straightened, starting next summer. In the meantime, they're out trimming and trying to cut back trees as best they can, but we're limited to what we can and can't do with the equipment we have and just the ability and safety of our guys, so. And I'm not saying that in a, in an upset way, I'm just...
You know what?
It is what it is.
You know what, Kurt? I just want to be on the record as saying that this is something that I truly care about.
Well, we have that on the record, so...
I, I hope so.
We do.
You know, and I, and I, again, I apologize for reiterating myself, but, you know, I, I just truly care about the condition of that road. I mean, and that's not the only road, but...
Were there other roads of concern that you haven't brought up?
There are other roads, um, Hol, um, by, um, by the church?
Mountain Road?
Mountain Road.
Mountain Road was just accepted in the Lot Set Program. We talked about that at the la, last meeting.
Okay.
So that'll be redone from top to bottom.
Okay.
Just like Bungee River.
And Bungee?
Again, Bungee, same thing. We got the funding letter for Bungee. It's scheduled to start at some point next summer, and they're going to do the connectivity project as well, so there'll be a sidewalk that runs from the Historical Society all the way up to Bungee School.
There is?
Yes. Brian, Brian Gate, Brian reported on that at the last meeting. Talked about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm done.
Okay, no problem.
I was going to say, Pumpkin Festival, good time as always. It's such a unique community event we have here in the town.
Attended with my family. My daughter volunteered a little bit at the event for her community service hours. She had a great time, saw a lot of friends, helped make some grilled cheese sandwiches, chatted with a lot of folks. Just a wonderful event as always, and thanks to everybody that, that puts that on and volunteers their time to make that a fun event for our town.
That was the 53rd annual.
Sure, it was good stuff.
Well, excellent, thank you. Well, Mr. Finley?
Yeah, no, just to reinforce, to thank the Pumpkin Fest, to do that year after year. They do a great job, so otherwise, no, about the town.
Excellent, thank you, bud. Trish?
Um, I see that the fence near the community center's been adjusted, so thank you for that. Update on Pearl Street fence, not fixed, so I'm also kind of beating a dead horse. However, this time, I am pretty confident when I drove by this morning, there's actually a, now a section of fence completely missing, and the issue with that is right over the fence from that sidewalk is a complete, if I did see it correctly, it is a complete drop, so if someone, someone could likely be hurt, so now, get it fixed.
Now, Rory, could you make a note to remind...
Get it fixed.
In the morning, please?
Um...
Okay. Anything else?
Yes. Broad Street Park, I just want to express a concern based on what we heard tonight. I respect both Mr. Horrible and Mr. Yagavane's comments. I would hope, to Mr. Horrible's point, anything that is going to go there, I would hate to see something take root and, and drive up the bricks there. I know that could take quite a few years to happen, but it potentially could be damaging years down the road, so I just caution on what we plant there is going to be long-term, because it sounds like if we're planting it, it's supposed to be permanent. I'd like to make sure it's not going to cause any long-term issues. I'm very forward-thinking in the future, so save us some money there. I, I feel strongly about that, also...
Well, just, the, the tree doesn't cost us anything.
I'm not worried about it. No, 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 I'm not worried about the cost of the tree.
The big tree that comes.
Mm-hmm.
There's no cost to the tree. The Regional Water Authority donates the tree, and the Haynes Corporation donates the trucking of the tree here and helping us put it up, so there's no cost to it.
Right. Was I misunderstanding what was happening, though? Because it sounds like we're looking to plant a tree permanently to stay...
That's something that the Parks Commission is talking about, but I wouldn't say that it was definite at all, and I think Mike kind of cleared that up. I like the idea, no. I like the idea of planting the tree as it is. I mean, the bringing a tree in every year, but that's the Parks...
I don't agree or disagree. I'm only concerned about the roots over the course of time driving up the block. That's my concern.
I don't, I don't disagree with that, and that's a conversation I had with the Chair of Parks Commission as well.
Okay. And lastly, I did have a chance to visit Mr. Baker over the weekend. I was so excited to see him awake and talking, and I didn't get to go until the afternoon, so he was slightly confused because he was getting tired, but he's still thinking about the town because Karen started talking about one of her committees, and he immediately jumped in and started talking about finding a key for the building in town. So I don't know where his thought process kind of went, but it was nice to, to see him and have a chat, and I'm glad to see him awake. He has a very, very long recovery in front of him, but I'm, I'm very hopeful. Their family needs a lot of prayers. Karen needs support, and he would, I'm sure, love visitors, but definitely reach out to Karen first, because I know it's very sensitive what time to, to visit.
Excellent.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Trish. Rory, anything we missed? No? All right, one thing I want to note, the meeting on Tuesday, October 16th, is going to be canceled, and we'll be meeting, assuming everyone is okay. Rory's going to be reaching out tomorrow. We're going to meet on Wednesday, October 24th. Reason being is, the meeting, first meeting in November is the Wednesday after the election. I actually leave for the National League of Cities that morning, so we're going to do a meeting in between, and then one right after, and then Thanksgiving. So if everybody can check your calendars to make sure that'll work, Rory's going to follow up with everybody directly tomorrow just to make sure. I mean, if it doesn't work, then we'll look for another day, but I wanted to find something